Okay, great. All right, good evening and welcome to our Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024 meeting of the Hanson Select Board. This meeting is being taped by Whitman Hanson Community Access Television. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mrs. Rain, you know the drill.
I do. We are looking for citizens at large to become members of the following committees. Bylaw committee, cable and internet committee, community preservation committee, capital improvement committee, cultural council, energy committee, historical commission, memorial day and patriotic observance committee, recreation committee, zoning board of appeals. Thought we changed that to council, uh, commission. Volunteer applications may be found on the town's website, www.hanson-ma.gov, or by calling Select Board's office at 781-293-2131. Nomination papers for the May 18th, 2024 town election are now available at the town clerk's office for the following offices. Two Select Boards for three-year terms, Board of Health for a three-year term, Cemetery Commissioner for a three-year term, Hanson Housing Authority for a five-year term, two trustees of public library for three-year terms, Whitman Hanson Regional School District Committee pre-K through 12 for a three-year term, assessor for a three-year term, Board of Health for a one-year term, planning board for a five-year term, two constables for three-year terms, and two water commissioners for three-year terms. Each candidate prior to obtaining blank nomination papers shall sign a statement containing his, her, name, and address and the town office which he/she intends to be a candidate. The last day to obtain nomination papers is Monday, March 25th, 2024, and nomination papers must be returned to the town clerk's office by 5:00 PM Friday, March 29th, 2024. A minimum of 50 certified signatures of registered voters is necessary in order for a candidate's name to be placed on the ballot. Upcoming meetings, Select Board, January 30th, 2024, Select Board, February 6th, 2024, and Select Board, February 20th, 2024.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. DeFrays, we're thrilled to have you. If you don't mind, I'm gonna take something out of order just so we can get Mr. Shav and Mr. Dykes on their way. So with that, Ms. Green, we're gonna move to appoint Kevin Dykes to town mechanic.
Yes, Madam Chair, vice adjutant members of the board. Myself and Highway Director, Mr. Shav, had the pleasure, and actually, I'm sorry, Highway Supervisor, John Graham, Steve Graham, sorry about this, Steve Graham, had the pleasure of interviewing Mr. Dykes for the master mechanic position. And I need to say, I was absolutely blown away by Mr. Dykes' knowledge of every single piece of equipment within the Highway Department. Everything from their trucks to their chainsaws. He knows the ins and outs of every single piece of equipment. He can tell you the type of engine in each vehicle. He can tell you the nuances of each vehicle, what is wrong with each vehicle, what to watch for each vehicle. He had, he does have some schooling on automotive, he does have that, but he has years of experience with the town and knowledge with the equipment. He also has education and experience with wiring. So if there's a wiring failure or a new radio needs to be implemented, anything like that, he can go in and correct that, which that type of work can be very expensive. He is, again, he blew me away with his knowledge. I cannot imagine a better person to step into this role of master mechanic. He holds all the required licenses for the position as well as 15 years with the town, so he also holds all type of historical knowledge as well. I will turn it over to Highway Director Shav on that, but that's my recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah, Kevin's been with us the last eight months, Mike Dean was out. And not on a full-time basis, but almost.
Jameson, did you please sit up there?
Oh, sure.
Let me hear it on the microphone. Thank you.
We don't have a spot.
Just state who you are, we know who you are, but, you know. Jameson Shave, Highway Director.
Yeah, so for the past eight months, Kevin's been filling into the position. He knows all the equipment, different vehicles, trapless vehicle, brush arms, the sand is, the different types of sand is, all the small equipment, the line strip is, the front end load, the big trucks, the small trucks. A lot of the stuff we have to send out because we don't have the specialized equipment or facilities to work on those. Another part of the position is you have to perform all the subordinate positions. So he knows how to pave and all the roadwork, everything that's associated with the department. Because of my absence or Steve Graham's absence, it's the master mechanic that runs the department.
Okay, thank you for mentioning that because I remember you and Steve telling me about those snowplow rodeos or whatever the heck it was, and I've always been very impressed with all the stuff that you do. So I was like, oh, glad that he's doing this, but, uh, we're gonna lose him doing the other stuff? Like, obviously, you won't be doing that all the time, but.
But he does all our radio work, programming institutions for the police fire.
Okay.
Doing all that, and the others.
Okay.
You could get an outside mechanic that has more certifications automotively, but he's not gonna know about snowplows, snowplow chains, different types of, you know, slide-ins or, you know, the sitter, the barges and everything that goes with that.
Is that anything that we should think about investing in? Like, is there an interest in him going back to school for some more automotive to just enhance his skills? I don't know if it's needed, but is that?
Yeah, I mean, that's always an opportunity, but it's, again, we're limited by the diagnostic equipment. We have to send a truck out, they have multi-known facility.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And they still have three or four guys working on it for a week and they can't figure it out.
Yeah.
To get, you know, there's so much you can do, but there's certainly classes you could take to.
Well, just think about that for your own development and, you know, if you guys think, then just talk to us about it and we'll put it into the budget and, you know.
Yeah, it's a lot more than just cars and trucks, it's a whole plethora of equipment that he has to. No, he knows the syntheses of it, what it needs to be worked on to prepare for the snow season. There's a lot of preparation work, you have to start three, four months in advance. You get things ready and he knows all that, where someone from outside wouldn't. Unless they came from another DPW, they wouldn't know that information.
Well, I'm excited, I mean, Kevin's worked hard for a lot of years and honestly, you know, when I ever, when I think about the DPW, I always think about Steve with Kevin, Steve and Kevin, Steve and Kevin. Like, every single event, every single anything, you know, that's who you see all the time. I'm not making short shrift of anybody else in the department, but you guys have been the most visible. And I think it's, it's high time for you to, you know, if this is what you wanna do, for you to get some recognition for that hard work. And, and I'm glad that you've stepped up and that you wanna take this chance and that you're getting the backing from Ms. Green and, and Mr. Shav. I, did you wanna say anything to us? I don't know. Well, well played.
Madam Chair, if I may, he also comes with a recommendation from our Fire Chief, Rob O'Brien, and Police Chief, Mike Mix.
Well, so I do think it's, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but I know you do a lot of the, what is it, which is how Robbie really knows you extremely well, the regional.
What kind of the rest of the team?
Yep.
I'm all for you. For Chief Mix, I'm on the self-reasoning bar post council. And I run the command post.
So you're very involved in the community in addition to being committed to your job and you're just, you know, well-rounded, so, so I'm glad you applied. Did anybody have any questions for Mr. Dykes or Mr. Shav or?
No questions, I just wanna point out that, you know, anytime we, you get glowing recommendations like that coupled with, you know, anytime we can make a movement from within, to your point, we wanna be able to support people to be where they wanna be, to get them motivated to come to work every day. So I just appreciate all the work you've done and will continue to do so. It's, it's an easy okay for me.
I'm just intrigued by snowplow rodeos.
Well, he and Steve can tell you, no, it's a competition, they do all kinds of stuff. It sounds fascinating, I would personally love to go see it.
I would too.
But you guys have done pretty well in it, haven't you? Yeah.
We made it to the regional council's place.
Yep.
If you come down to the high of mine, we'll see all the flags on the wall.
Wow.
Yeah.
It's really cool.
I know, I feel like we need to get our snowplow rodeo on, that would be fun to go to. Maybe you can tell us the next time they're doing it.
Between that and the car shows, I mean, we got a very automotive town.
Mr. George, anything?
No, I'm good.
Okay, all right, Mr. Gill.
I'm all set.
Okay, then I will entertain a motion. You don't have a motion in here specifically for us to read, right?
There's no specific one.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to appoint Kevin Dykes to the town mechanic effective today.
Effective tomorrow?
Tomorrow, okay, so effective January 24th.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
All right.
All right, congratulations. Thanks, Jameson.
Do you get a letter tomorrow? We'll get all the paperwork done and if you, does he, does he need to come to see you, Beth, to be sworn in?
This is upsetting, I can't.
I still miss.
Beth, does he need to come see you this morning? Or did you?
I didn't know when we were at the MMA or it would've said something like that.
Congratulations.
Point, whatever, for Whitman. Thanks, guys.
Take care.
That's, that's always nice to be able to have somebody.
Joe got one and I got one.
Move up in the ranks, everybody did.
It speaks to the leadership there too, because when you, when you promote somebody from within, it shows that you're grooming somebody and they actually want to be part of the department. It's a good sign.
Yeah, it really is, and, I mean, look at how well-rounded he is, it's great. So talk about succession planning, not only has Jameson got Steve, who's awesome, he's got Kevin who can do all this stuff too, it's amazing, so well done. I know, I love the idea of those, those snowplow rodeos. Okay, so thank you very much for indulging us. And may we ask that you indulge us just one more time? We've got the town clerk here for approving early voting hours for May 13th, 2024, May 14th, 2024, and May 15th, 2024. Ms. Sloan, was there anything you wanted to say or?
Um, yes, we, we, we're going to try, you know, the recommendation we've got before the law space that you as a select board have to hold, have early voting in the town for local actions and where we have all the other options we'd like to add.
Okay, okay, did anybody have any questions for Ms. Sloan? Okay, Mr. Weeks.
I make a motion to hold in-person early voting for the May 18th annual town election to be held at the Hanson Town Clerk's Office for three days as follows. Monday, May 13th, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Tuesday, May 14th, from 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and Wednesday, May 15th, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Do I have a second? Second, okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? All right, okay, great, thank you, thanks. All right, and now, that was a pathetic drum roll, but it was, I'd attempt anyway. Town planner update. Thank you for joining us, Mr. DeFrays.
Thank you for having me. So for the record, Tony DeFrays, town planner. And so I know I prepared a PowerPoint this evening, I know Mr. Weeks, he's very, he loves PowerPoints.
Love them.
All about it, yep.
Uh, so I'm gonna give you a little update of what's been happening and the different projects, the different projects that the planning department has been involved in, let's say, throughout the year, well, at least 2023 and into 2024. So, so the current jobs, current projects that we have going on is the MBTA zoning district and creation, the creation of the zoning district boundary and the bylaws that go with that district. We also have the Main Street pedestrian improvements design, which is for improvements for sidewalks from High Street to Elm Street. We also have the master plan, Zero West Washington Street, the Starter Home District, and HOCSAP. Each one of, each one of those projects were funded or partially funded through grants. Next slide, please.
I'm sorry, can we pause for a minute at the magnificence of that statement? Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, the.
Very aware.
Just really quick, the MBTA zoning district, we received two grants to get outside consultants on that one. Main Street was through the One Stop, Master Plan was one through the One Stop, Washington Street was through the One Stop, Starter Home District and HOCSAP, they were all through the One Stop program. Next slide, please. So the first one we're gonna discuss is the MBTA zoning. So this was, right now, we are working with a company called VHB. They're our consultant that are helping us get through the final phases. They were, their work was awarded under a $25,000 grant. So our district modeling is complete and that's the outline you see up on the, up on the screen. We haven't released this, let's say, it hasn't gone live yet, but it will be shortly. So the district modeling is complete and what that means is there was Excel spreadsheets that was, that were sent down by the state with all types of information that you had to input. And it, what the data that you input would determine whether your model or your district was in compliance. So VH, actually, last year, Oklahoma Planning Council began the process and modeled this district. VHB has come along and has, we've added a little bit, we've made some adjustments, so we've made the district a little larger. The plan you see on the right of the screen there also shows a, at the bottom of it in the yellow shows a sub-district which falls within our existing mixed-use district. And so we've sent, this has been sent along to the state for their approval because they have to approve the sub-district. We also have completed and have a draft zoning bylaws for that area. Last evening, the planning board closed the public hearing. We opened a public hearing, I believe it was last August, to discuss the district and the draft zoning bylaws.
So there's been public hearings for people to share their concerns or support or whatever for this, okay.
So those, that meeting was closed last evening and I'll get back to what's gonna be the next step after that. So the bylaws in the district itself have to be sent up to the state for their compliance review. And that has to be done 90 days prior to basically town meeting. So that's gonna be getting done probably within the next week, getting sent up to the state. We're looking to go before town meeting this May to get this approved as the zoning amendments, so the map will change, zoning map will change, and there'll be an amendment to zoning bylaws to include this district. So what the next step has been is now the planning board has done, closed the public hearing. What will happen is I will be submitting to the Select Board for their consideration the district and the draft bylaws. The Select Board will then turn around and ask the Planning Board to provide a report. Now, I know it seems strange that we're giving you this and then you're gonna have to give it back to us, but it's part of the statutory requirement. Then the public, then what will happen is the Planning Board will have a public hearing at the end of February. We have to publish two weeks in a row. After that public hearing, and also will involve town council to review the bylaws. Then we'll be moving forward, give the Select Board a report and trying to move this forward to get it to town meeting for May for approval. Also, we'll hopefully have by May an approval from the state saying that we're in compliance and we can get everything squared away. If for some reason there's some kind of hiccup, then at least we have October to sort of button things up because the deadline for this is December 2024.
And what happens if we don't comply or if, for some reason, it doesn't pass a town meeting? We have people rabble-rousing and up in arms with pitchforks, what happens?
Well, failure to comply will eliminate us from grants. It'll also open a town up to liability and legal action. The Attorney General's Office had issued a advisory to all towns that have to comply stating that it's the law. And if you don't follow the law, you're gonna open yourself up to possible litigation and fines under federal housing, mass housing, et cetera.
And doesn't this help us a little bit with the 40B stuff as well if, in, well, can you address that?
It helps us with, it helps us with the affordability.
Yes.
So any affordable housing created in this district would count towards your affordable housing stock.
And this is a way of sort of saying, this is a district, we're encouraging this in, we're.
Yes, the, the state has mandated that this all commuter rail, subway, anything with public trans, MBTA transport, create a district. Now, all the town has to do is create the district.
Yep.
The town is not required to put up the housing, all that'll happen under the private sector. The town just has to create the district for the housing to be allowed. And they prefer it within a half a mile. And this falls right within a half a mile, it's right, almost across the street from the MBTA station. It also includes a piece of property that is owned by, currently owned by the town, Hanson Housing Authority on Phillips Street. So all the town has to do is create the district and the district that we have now is in compliance. The district has to be able to, let's say, support 750 units. The district as it's created today would support 784. And they take out wetlands, roadways, et cetera, so the model, the model meets the compliance. So the tough part is the fact that the deadline, there's a lot to do, there's a lot to unpack. And at state level, they're, you know, they're, they have a lot of work because there's a lot of these now coming in, it's fast and furious. There've been a few communities that have reached their, achieved their approval. And I'm hoping that, you know, we'll be able to stick to the deadline, stick to our schedule and get things done.
Now, there've been some communities who have said, go pound sand, we're not doing anything about this. Can you speak a little bit about the litigation piece, like what, what kind of litigation? So there's all kinds of grants that would be taken off of the table. And as we can see, we've done a really great job of getting grants, but, you know, there's always a price to pay, you know, there's, there's compliance with things. Litigation in terms of, I would assume, private builders coming in and saying, you guys are?
Well, the, I was on the webinar with the Attorney General's Office the other, last week, and it was about crafting and drafting zoning bylaws and the process. And the MBTA discussion came up and from the Attorney General's Office, they said, you know, with the MBTA zoning, if someone asks you, you know, why do we need to comply? Their, this is their response, I quote them, "It's the law," plain and simple. And they're saying that if you don't comply with the law, they, you're open to them coming after you for violating that.
That, that bothers me.
Will they, will they? We don't know. I mean, obviously, after the deadline, I have, I personally have a feeling that, I think that deadline will probably be extended, but I can't speak, there's no information, and I say that, it's just a personal opinion, there's no type of information saying that that's gonna happen. I think there might be some communities that are gonna have a tough time trying to just meet the deadline though.
Yep.
Because there's a lot to do. Will, after that deadline passes, it'll be a matter of wait and see what, if anything, the Attorney General does to any of the communities that didn't meet the deadline and are refusing to comply.
For better or worse, this administration is incredibly bullish about housing. We were at the Massachusetts Municipal Association meeting and it was housing, housing, housing. And, and so, and, and last year at the Massachusetts Municipal Association, it was the first year Haley had just been elected and she came right out of the gate with Driscoll and said, "That's our number one mission, we're gonna create more affordable housing." You know, it's troubling for a little town like Hanson, you know, because we're small. So, you know, some of the, and some of these one-size-fits, you know, all solutions that they come up with don't necessarily work in little teeny bedroom, room communities like us. I understand where they're coming from and I appreciate everything the planning board's done. But of course, I, we do hear, all of us have had, you know, people say, why are we doing this MBTA communities thing? You know, this sort of feels like they're cramming it down our throat and, you know, all of that. I'm sure you've heard of all of that too.
I can, I can understand that feeling. Unfortunately, it's, the one thing that, again, I try and really reiterate and emphasize is that the town is only required to create the district.
Yes.
Okay, the town is not required to actually put up the housing. Now, there's a, the floor for Hanson is 750 units. Will 750 units ever be built in Hanson? Probably not, you know, or if they are, you're talking over an extended period of time. This isn't, you know, I, this isn't going to be a case of, I don't believe that this will be a case of, you know, bang, somebody's gonna come in and say, well, I'm gonna put in 750 units, I just don't think.
Well, we don't have sewer. So, so septic alone in some of this area with the wetlands and the proximity of the wetlands is gonna be problematic, you know.
Unfortunately, they're not, they're not, it's not a priority.
Yep.
So you say, you say that it's, you know, would feel like we're getting our arms twisted and too bad, but we really, this is really being forced upon us, basically. When you first, before you said about the Attorney General saying, "It's the law." No, it makes sense, you know, we, you know, it's good to have housing, but I don't wanna be forced into doing it and that, that is.
Especially when you think of, you know, Massachusetts, right, the home of the revolution.
Yeah, this is Hanson.
The whole idea about having things forced, you know.
It's not taxation without representation, but it's something without representation, I don't know.
Hundred percent.
Legislation without representation, I don't know what it is, but it feel, it feels draconian.
We don't have room to build in Hanson, I mean.
People, well, people live in Hanson because they like the idea of the aesthetic of trees and being out of the way, and a lot of people like the bedroom community aspect of it. So I, I agree, I just.
And, I mean, look, we're not, look, we don't, we're like 4% or something for affordable housing. We're not saying we're where we need to be, but we're also, we've got a lot of, of different impediments, you know, that prevent that, but nevertheless, Mr. George, Ms. Mrs. Rain, did you have anything you wanted to say about this?
No, it, I was at the same meeting as you and I heard all the same stuff. And I also, I heard other things that were being forced and it's, it's disturbing, it's disturbing.
The, until there's some kind of class action and some kind of court decision, you know, I just, I see that, you know, we have to comply. And I think that not complying is gonna hurt us in the grants and we know that Hanson grants are important to Hanson and that would be a, that would be a big hurt on Hanson to, to lose those grant opportunities.
And you've been very thoughtful with your grant getting too, I think, so, you know. We're doing it the right way.
We're able to do things we never have been able to do in the past because of the grants we're getting. So you're really over, you know, a barrel.
And I have to say, people have to realize, it's either grants or if you want this stuff, your taxes are going to go up considerably.
That is a good point.
So we, we go for the grants.
Yep.
So the next project is the Main Street pedestrian improvements. And so right, so what's going on with this project is there was an existing condition survey completed in 2023 in June. They have a 25% design completion with a conceptual design of sidewalks from Elm Street to High Street. And this also, we're looking at streetscape improvements, i.e. sidewalk, curving, lighting. I had presented this to the planning board as well recently because we've received a conceptual plan. Can you give them a slide, please? So obviously, this is at a small scale, but I have these on PDF if anyone is interested in seeing the, the plans. And we'll be doing a presentation of these plans at the planning board hearing. I believe it's gonna be the first meeting in February that the planning board meets. We'll have this on the agenda. So if anyone in the public or members of the board are willing to, interested, or interested coming to the meeting, we'll also have the representative from the design firm, Verdantis, there. So they've given us, there's gonna be, right now, the design calls for two sidewalks, one on either side, north side and south side. They've given us cross-sections, next slide, please. And so some cross-sections and some design, some details. So again, they're still in the, they're continuing their, their design work and hopefully, once, we're basically now, we're gonna open it up, see to the public, get some input from the different, you know, from various departments, from the board, the public, et cetera. And then, you know, we'll move it forward and hopefully have a final design, you know, prior to the grant funding ending. And then after that, we'll be applying for grant money for actual construction because, you know, it's nice to have plans, but I'd like to see us get grant money and start actually getting some physical things off the ground. And next slide, please.
So, I'm sorry, also at the MMA, we attended an economic development, you know, workshop and one of the main things they emphasized was sidewalk, sidewalk, sidewalks. The walkability of the area really drives a lot of other things and attracts people to wanna invest and live and all of that, so this is such a linchpin for us being able to get the rest of that in shape. I appreciate all the work you've done on that.
Thank you. One of the things with that, if you could just go back one slide for me, please. One of the things with this sidewalk area, it also falls along Main Street and is near the commuter rail station. So it's gonna add to that walkability. As you're aware, there's what we call the, was it 969, 999 Main Street? We call the Egan Project.
Yep.
You know, so that, there's some sidewalks out there already, but this will enhance the area with the sidewalks and the fact that there's gonna be. and the fact that there's going to be ground, ground level retail and then residential above. So, you know, it, it'll be a good improvement to that area, hopefully, start revitalizing. Yes, I think that, that's kind of happening in, you know, small amounts. It's, it's happening now.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
He's doing, Egan is developing, he's having sidewalks in front of his. Are they the same sidewalks as, was that taken into consideration with him?
Well, what I did is, I took the, I sent up the site plan that was done for that site up to this company so they could take a look at it and incorporate it into this design.
Okay.
So, it all went together. Next slide, please. So, the, some additional grant projects is the master plan. We're working with Old Colony Planning Council. They've been, we've had a couple of meetings. The planning board created a master plan steering committee, which consists of two members of the planning board, a member of the conservation commission, and two members of the public. We were fortunate to get two volunteers of public. The committee has met with the planning board. There's going to be some public events and outreach taking place in the future. One, I believe, is going to be at the end of the month, end of February at Camp Kawani. Also, there is a master plan survey on the town's website. And if everyone on the board, friends, family, anyone that's in Hanson, the public that's watching, you know, please go to our webpage, you'll see a tab that says master plan. Click on it, it'll take you to the Old Colony Planning Council website. It's a survey, take you maybe ten minutes. It's, it's anonymous, you don't have to put your name. And they're just looking for input from everyone on what they'd like to see, obviously, in the future.
I, I've taken it, it's quite good. And I also shared it on social media, but I'm wondering, can our office share it? I really think we need to share it, kind of ad nauseam a bit, just so that people know that it's out there.
Yeah, that's one of the things that Old Colony Planning Council has asked that, if we can really promote it as much as we can. They're going to try and have, you know, attend public events and, you know, really get it out there through social media and so forth. But, I figure this might be also a good place if everyone could just, you know...
What's the deadline for that?
The deadline is June of twenty twenty-four.
So, I'm wondering, maybe you could talk to Ms. Sloan about having a QR code at town meeting to capture some, at both town meeting and at the polls, outside of the polls, to kind of drive some interest that way?
We actually did discuss something similar to that last night at the planning board meeting.
Awesome.
So, so we were fortunate on the master plan, there was a, a grant, sixty thousand dollars there. And then, the town received an additional grant. And then, there were some monies that had to be put in at town meeting. The next one is Zero West Washington Street. Again, we received a grant just over ninety-eight thousand, just under ninety-nine thousand dollars. Hanson, we've been assigned what they call a, a house doctor, which is a certified engineering company that the Commonwealth is cert, so Mass, Commonwealth of Massachusetts certifies these engineering companies. They have, they have to meet certain criteria and they become what they call their house doctors. And so, when they, when the state gives out this grant, they'll try and team you up with a consultant. And so, we've been teamed up with VHB again. And what, so the contract is going to be executed shortly. And then, what they're going to do is, they're going to look at that piece of property, which is adjacent to the existing water department location. And they're going to take a look, they're going to do the survey work, they're going to look at the resource areas that are there, delineate them, they're going to look at the soils, and then, they're going to put together a preliminary plan to determine what's the most viable option for that property. Is it a single lot for some type of business? Can we create a business park? So, they're going to look at some options. So, you know, we've just started with that, so it's going to be a while for that work to get started. So, we'll hopefully have something within the coming weeks or months that I can bring forward to the, to the board. So, get the next slide, please. The next two is, we have the starter home district. We received a grant of just under seventy-five thousand dollars there. The contract has been executed, we're going to choose a consultant on that. And what that consultant is going to do is, under what's known as forty Y, which is a starter home district. The whole idea of the starter home district is to create affordable housing. And the homes are about eighteen hundred and fifty square feet of livable area. So, something small, something that you, you would see after World War Two. Small ranches, something like that, so more affordable. And so, what they would, this consultant would do is basically look at the town of Hanson as a whole and try and determine, are there, is there an area or areas that we could sort of fit a district and make it work? So, that we could, you could promote, these would be single-family homes. But, these aren't multifamily, these are single-family homes.
Is that another thing that's forced upon us? Or is that something we decide if we want to do or not?
That's, we decide. That's not, no.
We're not building these, we're creating...
I know, creating the zones and getting the...
The only, the only zoning that we're required to create is the MBTA one. This one is just something that we're looking at because it will help. If you create the zone and these houses build, it will go towards your affordable stock.
Yeah, oh, no, and I, I agree with that, yeah. I just don't want to be, I'm sorry, the...
It's not a mandate.
MBTA one.
Yeah, that one is not a mandate. Last one is Hoxav, it's a hundred thousand dollar brownfield redevelopment, looking at the, with the town homes. It's also, this site happens to be one of three that the Old Colony Planning Council, I think, had on their radar. So, we've executed the contract, we're going to choose a consultant, and they'll be moving forward on that. Next slide, please. So, some of the other miscellaneous projects that planning departments were working on is seeking funding through our municipal vulnerability action grant to look at replacing the culvert at Pratt Place, which is, needs replacement. And also, Camp Kawani, some of the drainage and issues they've had out there. We're eligible for these municipal vulnerability action grants. And so, I filed two expressions of interest with the state and they, I've had some meetings with them. I had a meeting with them last week. They give you feedback and some direction on, you know, language, what type of, you know, what you should put in there to try and give you a better shot at getting the grant. So, working on that. The next one is researching National Grid Fleet Advisory Services Program for possible electric vehicles for various town departments and installation of charging stations. I just had a meeting today with them on this. And basically, it's sort of like a mass saves for municipalities.
Oh.
And they look at, let's say, if the town says, okay, we want to replace some of our vehicles with electric vehicles. They'll look at, okay, give us an inventory of, let's say, your gas-powered vehicles. We'll take a look and see what is the equivalent in electric. They'll also, with, through National Grid, there's monies to cover the costs of installation of charging stations, so, so some infrastructure and rebates, I think, towards the vehicles themselves. So, for instance, just as, let's say, Town Hall, if the building inspector, what, a health inspector, conservation assessor, anyone that goes out and does inspections, instead of, let's say, using their own vehicle, has the ability to have a, a town-owned, a town-owned electric vehicle, you know, and goes out and does inspections and comes back. So, we have that, we have that ability. So, that is just in the infancy of looking at that. I'll be bringing that forward when I get more information, probably to the select board and trying to get some feedback from other departments. You know, it's been good feedback, you know, people have been interested. And there's even incentives for, like, heavy vehicles.
Really?
Yeah, like for highway department stuff, you know. Now, it may not be, you know, a full-time, full, like, dump truck, they might not have reached that yet, but there's some other vehicles that, and even some equipment, mowers, golf carts, you know, it's, it's amazing. There's a whole slew of, there's a whole slew of things.
And do we know about the reliability of, like, those types of vehicles, electric vehicles that are, like, that type of equipment?
They have all types of information that they've put together. And so, after I spoke with, with them today, I said, okay, well, what this company, this company does is they take you through the process and then, you know, and get you, take care of you, get you through the process, get you all set up with National Grid. And then, you know, it's kind of like, okay, now we hand off and you guys can take care of things. So, I, I think it's something that is probably worth looking at because many municipalities have, you know, their inspectional services and so forth, they're, they're, they're using electric vehicles, small SUVs or pickup trucks.
Inspection, I don't get nervous about, but when I start thinking about police or highway, I just, I just would want to make sure, you know, not that I want an inspectional person to be stranded or something, but I just, you know...
Well, the, there is the option for, you know, they have a whole slew of things from the highway to police and so forth. But, it's not as if you're required to get into those, it's what you choose.
Yeah.
So, again, it's in its infancy, but it's, once I get more information and I can put some, together an outline and possibly a, a call or meeting with the board or members of the board and Lisa, you know, to sort of bring information to you so that you're, you know, you have an understanding.
I think that would be helpful. And then, if, you probably would have included this anyway, but I'd be curious to know repair costs, you know, what, like, has... Because I may, I may have an extreme bias about this, but like, in my mind, I'm thinking, oh, it probably costs a lot more to fix those vehicles than it would a standard vehicle, you know, I...
They do have all those breakdowns. They do bring all that type of information up.
Okay.
You know, the cost to run it, what it costs, let's say, to run, say, an electric vehicle versus gas, repairs, et cetera. So, they do have all that information.
What it costs in time for the employees using the vehicles, will they have to be charged all the time? Because that happens.
Yeah, they do have, yeah, they have a lot of, they have a lot of information.
Well, we're going to have to get our act together on the, on charging, an actual charging station that charges because we don't have any...
Yeah, we have a charging station.
That's part of the, that's part of the...
It doesn't work.
It, it doesn't work, but we have one.
We have one. It, it, it is functional, it's just a software issue, but that's a whole different...
Well, that's, that's a dead-end software, so that's, that's done.
Well, that's one of the reasons that I looked at this program. Because that may, the program may be able to help us with the charging stations we already have as part of it. So, I think it's just worth looking at, once we get all the information together and considering it. So, the next one was researching funding sources to update our housing, the Hanson Housing Production Plan, which expires in May of this year. And also, the Open Space and Recreation Plan, which expires in April. And both of these are key in certain grants. If you have them in place, it will save bonus points for getting grants. And the Housing Production Plan especially, I'd like to try and get the funding, secure some funding so that we can show that we're in process of getting the funding or to renew it versus starting from scratch. I've reached out to the company that actually did the Housing Production Plan originally for Hanson. We had a couple of email communications and they sort of fell off, they fell off the face of the earth. I don't know what, what really transpired there. And I reached out more than once to be like, hey, you know, we're... Also, the, I believe it's the CPC covered the cost of the last Housing Production Plan. So, it may be a case of looking at, trying to get some grant funding and/or the CPC and getting an estimate of what it would cost to update the Housing Production Plan and do it that way.
Recreation, the Open Space and Recreation Plan also is CPC eligible. Any kind of those plans for any of the permitted uses under community preservation are permitted community preservation cost. So, it doesn't just have to be like historic restoration or house, like, actual tangible housing. The planning and documents that are needed are eligible under that.
So, those are, yeah, so those are two that we're going to be chasing to try and...
But, you're on a tight timeline because they expire, you're saying, May of twenty-four and April of twenty-four. Obviously, the plan will expire before we could get the funding, right?
Well, I'm hoping that we can get a process going so that we can demonstrate that we're in process of getting them updated and that will help us versus, you know, you know what I mean? If, I think if we show that we're actively pursuing updating it versus, hey, we just don't care and we're going to let it expire, I think that'd probably go a long way for us.
Okay, so, it definitely would be worthwhile to speak to community preservation because we've got a very tight timeline on when the articles for town meeting are due. And we can certainly put a placeholder in if there's sort of like a general agreement. But, isn't it like February? Huh? I was going to say February ninth, but, okay, February eighth, so...
So, maybe a placeholder type situation.
Yeah, yeah.
Next slide, please. So, some additional things is the One Star Program for the twenty twenty, FY twenty twenty-five. The expressions of interest will begin on the ninth of February. I have, at this point, five potential, I've created a list. I have five things at this point, obviously, more things coming as I, as I think about them. And I may shift some things around based on the ability to get funding from other sources. Researching the possible grant opportunity through Mass Housing for the development of the Phillips Street property on, that the Hanson Housing Authority owns, Mass Housing. I had reached out and spoke with them and they had a very intro, a big interest in some of the properties that Hanson Housing Authority owns. Unfortunately, two of the three, we really can't do anything with at this time. But, they are still willing to look at Phillips Street and potentially grant, give us grant money to look at the feasibility, sort of like we're doing with Zero West Washington Street. See what that site might be able to create as far as housing. Because that is right adjacent to the commuter rail and it also will fall, again, within the MBTA zone. Then, we have the researching locations for the Main Street Wardwalk. There was earmark money for that. And researching compliance with the new Cannabis Control Commission regulations. That is sort of in limbo. It's one of those that there's new regulations and the town has to promulgate new regulations, but there's really no guidance yet. And I've been working with the town council, I keep getting in touch, I get in touch with them on occasion to say, hey, what's... I read, I see, I do a webinar, I get in touch with town council and say, hey, what, what are you here? What do we need to be doing? And so, they're still, it's one of those, it's still, they're still working. One more, next slide, please. So, this is the last slide. I just wanted to give some recognition to Krista Magah and Luke Mitchell of VHB, who are working again with us on the MBTA and the West Washington Street. Eric Donato and Roy Messier and Jeff Leplant, Jeff Plant, sorry, of Verdantis, who are working with us on the Main Street pedestrian improvements. Henry, Anna Duggan and the staff of the Old Colony Planning Council, all these folks have been, you know, tremendous help to our planning department in getting these projects moving forward. So, that's pretty...
And, of course, in your own humble way, you as well.
Yes, very hard work. I just had one question about Pratt Place. Did we not talk about using some kind of ARBO money for that? Is that off the table?
No, that's, that's still on the table.
That's still on the table, okay.
Yeah, we're, we're sort of trying to find, you know, where can we get...
That's another source.
I wish we could get the grant money so we could use the ARBO for something else. That would be the ideal.
That's what I was thinking, that's where my mind was going. I actually, I've never driven down there and I drove down there the other day. Well, it's totally scary, it's kind of pretty.
It is, it's quite lovely down there.
Yeah, yeah, so...
But, the infrastructure issue is...
There's four houses beyond it, though, that, they were in trouble if that thing goes.
Yeah, and the difficult part is, I had applied for Pratt Place through the Commonwealth's Small Bridge Program, which that culvert would, it fits like right into its niche and it fits right into their requirements. Except, we came up two feet short. You have to be ten feet, we were eight. And they're, they're a bit rigid where they, they went out and they did an inspection. And there's criteria you have to meet. We're not, it's not a numbered bridge. The unfortunate part, too, is it's on a dead-end road.
Yeah.
So, you're only servicing four properties. But, they went out there and they measured and they're like, it's supposed to be ten, you're eight. And I'm like, jeez, well, if I knew that you were coming out, maybe we could have just made a conversation. So, we get shot down there. The alternative is basically having to do the meet the stream crossing guidelines, which are pretty intense. And you're talking about a, an area that you could potentially see a span, almost, I'm, I'm going to call it a bridge span. You know, possibly of some type of arch culvert that spans in the bankful conditions. And this is just using online sources, it's like around nineteen feet. And you have a box culvert there that's maybe about ten. So, you're talking about getting wider. And the idea of the stream crossing now is to get that stream back to its natural state versus forcing it through a...
Could a fire truck even get over that?
As far as I know, yeah.
It can still, because that's awful narrow.
It's, it's been, it's been set up so that it's, you know, it's hanging around, but it's not something we want to just forget about. So, we're, we're looking at that.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so that's...
As usual.
No, thank you so much for joining us and for all of your hard work and for the update.
Okay, I'm sure I'll see you probably to discuss the MBTA bylaws.
We look forward to that.
Okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
All right, thank you very much.
Great power.
Yeah, thank you. Um, okay, uh Ms. Green, Hanson Agreement with Lakeville Animal Shelter, discussion.
Okay, um so we have been partnering with Lakeville um with, and utilizing their animal shelter. For animals that our animal control picks up, um apart, well, mainly dogs. Um each year they have sent an agreement that we have signed, um it's an enter into agreement. This year, the agreement um includes an assessment fee to the town of the two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh for improvements they needed to do at the shelter as a result of inspections from the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources. Um so basically, this is um an agreement to get us through the next year. Um and then we will pay the fee out of the animal control um budget line. Um and this will hold us over until um we're able to hopefully open up our, our own shelter.
Come up with some other alter. So how much in total are we paying to Lakeville?
Um just as two hundred and fifty dollars this year. Prior years, we, we hadn't been assessed a, assessed a fee.
So how do they do this for us, for no fee?
Well, what happens is if our, our animal control um picks up a, a dog that is um loose, running around, he brings it to the shelter. The owner, when they go pick up the dog, they pay a fee to the shelter.
Wow.
For the dog. So that's, that's how they make some money. Uh and this does require the select board um to sign, sign the agreement.
Okay, so um I will entertain a motion to enter into the agreement as discussed by Ms. Green.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just, just.
Mr. Queaks.
No, just for clarification, just really quick. Um the town of Hanson pay a twenty dollar drop off fee for each dog brought. And then it talks about a twenty five dollar per day boarding fee. So the, the, the owner gets the twenty five dollar a day boarding fee.
That's correct, yes.
And we just pay twenty dollars.
We haven't received any bills from them for twenty dollars, so.
Oh, God.
I don't know if Joe has been paying it out of his pocket when he drops dogs off there. He has not come to us for reimbursement for this.
He also said he hasn't been dropping a lot of dogs off there. He's been, essentially been our shelter.
But I'm seeing, the reason why. Cause if we, if we go the route of opening up our own, I mean, this has a lot of opportunities.
Oh, absolutely.
For us as well, because I'm seeing fifty dollar late fees. I'm seeing utilization fees. I'm seeing, there's a lot more than just two hundred and fifty dollars.
Yep.
And it doesn't spell out necessarily who pays what, but like point seven, the town of Hanson responsible for medical expenses. You know, so things like that. Like there are opportunities here where we can kind of adopt some of this stuff and apply it to ours. If we don't already have some of this.
Absolutely, yes.
And I would suggest we try to get some of the information. We keep, we, like you say, we, we don't know who, if we're paying or if, if Joe's paying or we're paying. It would be good to have some numbers. How many dogs are we, are we sending in the past five years to Lakeville? And how long are they there for? And who's paying the fees? Do we have anything?
Yeah, cause even if he's not doing it out, e- even, let's say he's doing it out of his own pocket and he's not doing the reimbursements, I still don't feel right about that. So we should be doing, we should not have him.
Whether he's paying it or he's keeping the animal, neither of these options are like long-term sustainable.
Correct, correct, yeah.
Yeah.
And like I said, they, Lakeville has, we have not received any kind of a bill or an invoice for any of these fees. So my best thought on that is that they're charging the uh, the owner of the pet when they come, when they go down and pick up the dog. They're charging them twenty five dollars per day. They're charging them the twenty dollar drop off.
Yeah, but there's nothing to stop the owner then from forwarding the bill to us.
Right, but we haven't seen anything.
And we've never seen a bill from Lakeville either?
Apart from this two hundred and fifty dollars, we have not.
But this is the first, this is the first time they're implementing it. So in the past, we've never received.
We have not paid, no, we haven't paid any, any bill to the town of Lakeville for um any dogs on the shelter, so.
Given that, it'd be good to know the, the, how many dogs have been.
Gotta keep it quiet and.
Well, I don't know if they have those type of records. That's the only thing. And where we, we have seen.
A, a guesstimate from Joe.
Yeah, we can certainly ask Joe. Um but what I understand, he goes down there, they don't have availability, so he brings the animals to his house.
So I already got the motion on the floor and all that stuff, but I do think that.
I don't even know if it was seconded, totally.
It was, it was.
Okay, all right.
I, I just think that at the end of the day, this would be something in one of these contracts that basically gives us an out that if they don't bill us in a timely manner. Then they, we, they can't bill us. Cause I would, I just don't wanna get hit with, it is taxpayer money. I just don't wanna get hit with a.
Yeah, with like a retroactive ten year bill.
Yeah, just some type of wacky thing. And because we're municipal government, we, we have this obligation to pay it. When it's reality, it's like they should have billed us in a timely manner.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah. I mean, and they know where we are, so they, you know, if, if they're sending an invoice to Joe or whatever and they're not getting response, which I highly doubt. They know to contact our office and say, hey, you owe us money for this, but.
Is there anything in this contract different than the contract we've signed with them in the past?
Um apart from the two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay.
Um all, basically, everything else is the same.
Okay.
That, that was all.
All right, so I had a.
Get a second.
Motion and a second and any further discussion? Okay, um all in favor? Aye, great. All right, um and then you can pass that around to us for signature, I guess, Ms. Green. And then that brings us to another document, um a proven signed treasure collector contract, Ms. Green.
Uh so what we do have, when we had uh spoke at our, one of our last meetings regarding the contract for the treasure collector, Lisa Clark. Um there was some dates that needed to be updated. Um and then there was some language that was requested to be added to regarding um her ability to borrow some vacation time. Um where we had come to an agreement, a compromise where with her vacation, she is, she is granted twenty, she has twenty-five days per year. Um but in order to mitigate the possibility of any employee taking all those days and then leaving the town employment. Um there was a, an agreement that she would be given twelve point five days as of July one. And then twelve point five days as of uh January one, so they're breaking it up. Um but the, there was language, um a request for language that would allow her, in case she wanted maybe to take an extra five days or whatever. That she could borrow from her future allotment. So that language has been.
Okay, so we voted on all of that last week and the contract that's before us incorporates all of those things.
Incorporates all of that, yes.
So I will entertain, I will entertain a motion to execute the agreement with um treasure collector.
So moved.
And I should say.
Second.
Um effective December eighteenth, um effective January, I'm sorry, uh it was interim December eighteenth. And then full treasure collector, January first through um December thirty-first, twenty twenty-sixth. And I've got a motion and a second. All in favor? All right, fantastic. All right, so we've got those on there and your timing is impeccable, sir. Um.
Where would you like me to sit?
Um.
Where were you on the night of the fifth? See, right there.
We have two copies, one copy for us, one copy for Lisa.
So that brings us to Camp Kawani. Um so the first item, um just so you know, uh Mr. Melissa, um we had Mr. Means here and told him we would be. Speaking about his particular situation next week.
Yes.
Um so we are going to um skip past that bullet on this agenda. Um but first on the Camp Kawani bullets is late payment for one day liquor licenses.
Um I believe Dory gave you guys information about the late payment. Uh there was, there was a little issue in the office. Um that's been remediated and we're taking steps to kind of go forward with it. So don't expect it to happen again.
Okay.
There's been a little bit of uh, there's been some um.
Little disconnect?
Uh it was a disconnect and there's been a lot of stuff going on at the camp with, with one of our people, um not in a bad way, but. So just a little bit of a disconnect, but it shouldn't happen.
Okay, all right, that sounds good. And then we've got approval of food pantry St. Patrick's Day fundraiser, three sixteen twenty-four at a rate of twenty-five dollars per hour. I'm sorry.
That's, that's.
Yeah, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Um I'm, I am recusing myself because I'm part of that fundraiser, um but um all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh appointment of Malcolm Hesson as caretaker, Hassan?
Yeah.
Hmm, okay. Uh caretaker at fifteen dollars per hour.
Um. Yeah, so I'm super excited about this one. So I don't know if you guys know, Malcolm used to be the uh, the parson janitor of the library. Um and he, he um.
I thought they recognized it.
Yeah, so he, he unfortunately got um, you know, let go from that position because they hired full time. Um Malcolm is a, is a, is a great carpenter. Um he really likes to work and stay busy, so. He's actually my neighbor, so I recuse myself to not vote to appoint him. Um not like I have any financial gain or anything like that. But he applied to the camp, um and he's been working with Chris Hoffman, the facilities manager up there, doing, you know, um painting flower boxes and stuff like that. Um, you know, just to kind of keep him going. And he's been doing great work up at the camp. Anything from painting to, you know, like carpentry work and things like that.
He always had a great reputation, but as I recall, I don't think he could go full time. He, or they would, I don't know why he didn't, but I, but that we, they ended up hiring a full time person up there and then Malcolm ended up being without a job.
He, he, he couldn't go full time. He is a um, I'll say, he, he's an older gentleman.
Right.
So um, you know, he, he, he loved doing the stuff at the, at the library senior center. He, he loved doing the janitor work there in the morning time and kind of just going and do it. Um he also does a lot of fishing during the summertime.
Okay.
So uh, that's, that's kind of like.
Camp Kawani is gonna be a perfect place on his lunch break. He can.
So that, that's, that's, and he's not, he, he's not doing, you know, thirty hours a week there. You know, he's doing a couple hours a day, however he really sees fit. He's on the schedule. He's working with Chris mostly. Um we definitely have a use for him to do, you know, things around the camp. Um so, yeah, I'm, I'm very excited about that.
Okay, um I will entertain a motion to appoint Malcolm Hesson as the caretaker effective, well, has he already started?
Uh he is doing like some light volunteer work right now around the camp.
Okay, so should his effective date be tomorrow?
Yeah, I think his effective date is.
All right, so with an effective date of January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Turn seconded.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, and that brings us to approval to move forward with renovating the old store and bringing it back into operation for next summer.
Yeah, so this, this is, this is, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Oh, no, feel free.
So um I don't know if you guys know, next to the firehouse, we had that small store, well, it used to be a store, right?
Yep.
So um Dory um actually came up with the idea.
Tell me where it is.
So the firehouse is in the back, um.
Oh, yeah, I saw it. Yes, yes, okay.
So right next to the ferries is, there's a, there's a smaller structure there, kind of looks like a elongated cabin. Um that used to be a store, apparently.
Yeah.
Um Dory came up with the bright idea of, of, of turning it back into a store, cause right before this, it was kind of used as storage.
Doesn't it have like almost a shelf in the front of it kind of thing or?
Uh not, not really a shelf. I would call it more of like a farmer's porch.
Okay, all right, yeah.
In front of it. Um so uh we have, we have budget to um fix it up, to put it into a store. Uh we have the idea of selling prepackaged snacks there during the, during the summertime. Um also selling stuff for camping, wood, um mosquitoes. We have ideas of doing like some Camp Kawani merchandise up there, you know, sweatshirts, hats, stuff like that. Kind of some of those bumper stickers that the hikers put on the back of the stuff. Um just kind of bringing it back. And it's not gonna be full fledged this year, but it's, it's, we're gonna start doing small things during the um. During, you know, when, when the Cranberry Cove opens up, we'll, we'll sell passes up there, for example.
Yep.
Um and stuff like that. So we're really excited to get that going. Um it'll, it'll bring some revenue into the camp. Uh we're gonna be kind of, um we're working with the Board of Health already to kind of get their blessing on, on going ahead and doing that. We've talked to um, um the building inspector about that as well. Um and we, we have a um, a structural um company coming in and actually um doing work on it.
Is it in pretty good shape or?
Yeah, it's in pretty good shape. The only thing we really need to do is um, is kind of bump up the electrical in there because we're gonna be putting fridges and stuff in there and, and things like that. So we want to have the electrical really solid. Um I'm not sure about the whole electrical, I'm not an electrician.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that it's like, uh, you know, knob or tube wiring or something like that. But um we have the Eagle, Eagle and the Eagle Building, who did our other cabin, come in, take a look at it. And um give us a quote for fixing it up and then everything like that. So we're, we're excited for it. We would just like the select board's blessing to kind of move forward with that. Um I'm not sure if we need any additional licenses for that. Um I'm not sure if it'd be a um.
Vexular license?
Something along those lines.
I don't know if the town, that's interesting. You know what? You're gonna need to talk about the town selling merchandise. Um you, you're gonna need to talk about that because um I know when we did the two hundredth anniversary, we had to do it through the auspices of the, of the committee. Um of the two hundredth committee, so it may be that. Well, well, can you look into that, Lisa? I just want to make sure we don't fall, you know, run afoul. There might need to be like a friends of Camp Kawani group or we'll call it something else, but like, you know. Um supporters of Camp Kawani or something like that, that we, we work through if the town can't directly sell it. There is some, there's some weird.
I know there was alcohol restriction.
Yeah, there is about.
Alcohol up there.
Yeah, we, the town can't really sell like merch and like food and like drinks. So we'll have to come up with the, uh, you can work with them on this. I, I, I'm sure we can get there. We're just gonna have to be thoughtful and make sure that we don't have any pitfalls for the.
I know there is other towns that have kind of like a beach area like that that do sell stuff like that, so I'm pretty sure it's possible.
Okay.
I'm not sure if they have an arrangement where they have like what you're saying.
That's what I'm saying. I, I, I think the devil's in the details. Uh like I said, we can get there. We'll figure it out. Ms. Green will work with you. And we'll figure out how to get it done.
We're super excited about it. We think it's gonna be a great, great.
Oh, I think it's gonna be fun. That's really nice.
And then we have, oh, and we have an option of weddings actually, um, you know, um hiring the store to stay open.
I was gonna suggest that, yes.
Like if they get, it's gonna be camping for the night, they can hire an additional caretaker to stay in the camp for, you know, in the camp store until, you know, ten, eleven o'clock. Obviously, safety and everything's a top priority. Um but that's also another stream of revenue we can kind of make up there. Um, you know, kind of having people pay us to sell the products.
Yeah, I, I think it could be a lot of fun and I think people would incorporate it into weddings, like if you had a penny candy store. Like there's all kinds of stuff people would do. Uh the Twizzlers that people do after weddings, all that stuff, so. Um, okay, um, all right, I will entertain a motion to approve the renovation of the old store. And um having Ms. Green work with Mr. Melissa to figure out how they can sell things there.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, um any further discussion? All in favor? Great. All right, and that brings us to wedding exposition to be held on May fifth, Mr. Melissa.
Yeah, so the wedding expo, we did it last year and it was a, it was a pretty good success. I think we got probably four or five bookings out of it. Um from what I can recall, the number is being told to me. Um so we would like to do it again this year. Um last year, what we did was we um, we had a raffle prize for the people who came in and um it was um. I'm blanking whether it was half off a wedding, um half off a wedding or not. But I, I, I would have to, I, I believe it was half off a wedding, so. Um and, and that's a discount we're gonna have to have approved from the select board anyway, so. Um but yeah, it was a great success. So um we had vendors come in, they had tables and, you know, the place was popping. We, we, you know, we had a lot of good, um, good, good people come in to do it, so.
I, I think um you may want to talk to um your um board about. Maybe you even think about if you book today at that expo, you get two hundred dollars off or some, you know what I mean? To lock people in there, because once they're there and they see the beauty of it, they're, they're gonna want to book.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's also a good option. I can bring that back to the board. We have a meeting in the beginning of February, so that's a good, that's a good option.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to allow the wedding exposition to be held. And that fee is waived, correct, for the wedding exposition?
We're running it, yes. So it's ran by us, so yeah, there would be no fee.
Oh, all right, cause I was thinking the other wedding exposition, you know.
That one, that, that one was um, yeah, that, that's, that's.
That didn't work out?
Yeah, it was an outside potty that did it and it was, you know.
Yeah.
But we're, we're just, we're gonna run it ourselves now, so there's, there should be no, I hope there's not a P. I don't know, that would work.
Okay, all right, that, that would be weird. Um you're charging yourself.
Yeah.
Um, okay, um I will um entertain a motion to have the wedding exposition up at Camp Kawani on May fifth.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Great. Okay, thank you so much.
No problem. Sorry for being late.
No, you were, exactly, like literally, you could not have timed it any better.
I had to get the voice going, so I got off the train and I got a phone call, so I had to.
Oh, boy.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right, thanks. Um, all right, that brings us to all business. Um Ms. Green, the ever-present um Evergreen twenty twenty-four annual licensing. Of upscale autos, class two auto dealer license. What say you?
So this, uh, this business uh was, was extremely late getting their renewal application and their fee paid to us. Um they literally walked it in, what, December twenty-eighth?
And what was the due date?
Um December, well, officially November thirtieth.
November thirtieth.
December fifth, we should.
Are we charging late fees?
We did not for this one, but I think we should make a plan.
Do we have an ability in our bylaws to charge late fees? Okay.
And I checked other surrounding towns and they do charge late fees. It's generally double the fee.
Okay, I think wherever we can um follow our bylaws, we ought to follow the bylaws and certainly if it's going to put more money in our coffers. Um, okay, was there anything else to know about this? Any violations, up to date on taxes, water bill, et cetera, et cetera?
Place and fire and uh, building and fire, rather, reviewed and they both gave me their blessing.
Didn't we talk about this one last week? We just didn't sign it?
Well, we did not. I wasn't here, so I watched it and I, I knew all the answers to the questions, but because I wasn't here, it couldn't answer.
Who's responsible for deciding about late fees?
The select board, yeah.
Okay, so will you make a motion then to dir, to direct them? Cause I just, it's ambiguous to not tell them if we have to tell them.
Yep. Um, all right, so let's get through this and then we'll do a separate, good idea. Um so. idea. Um, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the, uh, class-two auto dealer license for upscale autos.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then I will entertain a motion to prospectively, um, have our board, um, our office impose late fees as, um, stipulated under the bylaw. But did you more specifically want to impose a late fee on this particular one?
No, I ju, I, we, I just want clarification on what you were asking them, because I didn't know where you, where we were going with it.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all, that's all.
So, I, I would say impose in, uh, with an effective date of our next licensing, um, you know, phase, because we didn't, we didn't let people know in our, you know, our first initial letter. Uh, but now we can put that in the initial letter that anyone who does not renew and pay the fee by so-and-so date will be, um, assessed a late fee.
Okay, and, um, so, uh, because, you know, it ended up with Ms. McDowell running around like a maniac, because people decided to last-minute things and it's completely unnecessary. Um, and she really had to chase people down.
Yes, she did, yes.
So, I will entertain that motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. Um, one-day license, we have, um, one-twenty-one, twenty-four, um, Allison Ramsey, baby shower. Wait a minute, didn't that already happen?
This already happened.
Okay, well.
This has been part of the issue.
This is part of the late, late fee.
Gotcha. Okay, I wasn't trying to stir apart there. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve that liquor license.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Approve open session meetings, January ninth, twenty-twenty-four. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Great. Um, at committee updates, anything, any burning hot button items that we need to update one another on in the way of committees?
Uh, I have a High Street Park committee meeting tomorrow. We, we get another presentation from folks that, uh, have landscape design background and whatnot. So, I, I know people are becoming more and more interested in that. So, just a public announcement, uh, tomorrow six o'clock here.
And you guys record your meetings, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so P, I mean, it's not obviously wildly exciting to listen to, you know, just the meeting, but, um, okay. And then, uh, economic development, same thing. We have a meeting tomorrow. We're also doing a PSA, um, just telling people, hey, we exist. There's an economic development committee. We want to work with you. Um, Whitman-Hanson Regional School Agreement Committee, nothing to really update on that. We're not meeting until, when are we meeting? Is it like the first week in February? Somewhere, February twelfth, maybe?
February, I believe it's February twelfth, yes.
Okay, all right. Um, and then, um, we already discussed the recreation committee slash commission. Uh, Ms. Green, on the McQuon Property Reuse Committee, I would really like to get a meeting on the books. Um, we've got a full contingency of volunteers and I want to get that popping. Um, so I'm looking to you to do that.
Okay.
Okay, great. And highway committee, we gotta get that popping also. I'm looking at you only because you're the.
I know you are, because.
Only because you're the, the person who drew the short straw on that one.
Yes, I did draw the short straw on that.
So, um, what can we do about that, Ms. Green?
So, I, um, actually, uh, Tony just forwarded me the report for the feasibility and I haven't, I haven't even had a chance to open it yet. But, um, I will forward that to Ian and then we can get a meeting scheduled to, uh, discuss that, the report.
All right, 'cause we need to get traction on those two, McQuon and on that, on, uh, the highway, highway committee stuff. Gotta get that popping. Um, any other committee updates that anybody can think of? Okay, all right. Uh, that brings us to our town administrative report. Ms. Green?
Hi, yes, I'm chair, vice chair and members of the board. So, um, just again, speaking of recording meetings, just want to remind all of our committees, commissions, boards that all meetings do need to be recorded. Uh, was a bylaw that was passed through our town meeting, uh, requiring all these, their meetings to be recorded. Um, we are, our IT director is looking into the reporting devices. We're working with, um, Whitman-Hanson Community Access to, um, get some, a couple of additional recording devices and still, until we can get the, um, order for all the rest of the recording devices. So, I do, I do suggest that the chairs of the committees, commissions and boards reach out to our office so that we can, um, get them the recording devices.
Um, may I suggest that we be a bit more proactive about this? Um, it, do we have a way to forensically figure out who is complying with the bylaw, which by the way, has been in effect for two years? This isn't a new bylaw. And it was enacted so that, um, although meetings are public, um, most of them, unless it's an executive session, um, it's really not truly transparent unless people are able to hear or see it if they're not able to attend. And, um, so, uh, you know, I really want to make sure that people understand the reason why that bylaw was put into place and that they're complying. And if they're not, I would like to hear about why they're not. And we need to take some action to get them to do it. And in particular, well, really, any, any board or committee, and this isn't just boards or committees that are appointed by us. This is elect, other elected boards and committees, appointed boards and committees, any board and committee in town. And if you can't videotape it, you have to at least do an audiotape so that people can catch up, you know, and, and listen to it. Minutes don't do it justice. Minutes, you know, that's, you've got to produce the minutes under open meeting law, et cetera, et cetera. But so, you know, um, a lot of nuances are missed, um, just reading minutes, um, that you may want to find out by re, by listening or watching a meeting. Um, so I would really hope that our office would, um, go out and forensically, um, do a little bit of an audit and make sure it shouldn't be difficult, 'cause I think, um, we know most of the boards and committees are in fact complying. Um, and I think there's just a hand, uh, maybe one or two that aren't. Um, and.
We'll definitely work on that.
Yeah.
And send out the reminders and, um, we'll get in touch with all the chairs and we'll get their feedback on.
'Cause I believe Ms. McDowell sent out around a reminder maybe a couple months ago. I don't know, it seems like it was a couple months ago. Might have been longer, but, um, but apparently a reminder wasn't enough, so we need to take it to the next level. All right, that'll be great.
Absolutely.
All right, Ms. Green?
Um, so, secondly, I am very happy to report that I received, uh, notice by a letter through, um, the Green Communities Grant, that we have been awarded a Green Communities Grant, uh, one hundred seventy-three dollars and six, six, one hundred seven, wait a minute, one hundred seventy-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars, um, the town is gonna receive. And that's to put in heat pumps, uh, for heating and a cooling system here at the town hall. Um, and we also received ten thousand dollars towards, that will go towards the purchase of two hybrid police cruisers. So, it's gonna be five thousand dollars for each cruiser. Um, so they did award us that. Um, I'm waiting on the contract so that we can move forward with, um, beginning the planning for that work. So, very exciting, because we were awarded a Green Communities Grant last year to winterize town hall and some of the other buildings to, to get town hall ready for this next step. So, um, good work. And I'd like to thank Old Colony, Colony Planning Council for assisting us with that, um, application.
Good work, Ms. Green.
Excellent. So, yeah, really excited about that. Um, attended the Mass Municipal Association Conference Saturday and Sunday in Boston. Um, that conference is, is, um, very, very good. We, they have a lot of educational workshops that we can sit through and learn through new things. Uh, Governor Ki Haley came and spoke and announced, um, basically in, in her budget, she has some increases for unrestricted municipal aid, uh, possibly not, an extra three percent, um, increases in the chapter money, roadway repairs, uh, in schools. So, her budget, we are waiting for her to finalize her budget, which should be January twenty-fifth. So, as soon as that's finalized, uh, the budgets will come out and all the towns and cities will find out what their increased age is going to be. So, uh, we eagerly await that. Uh, John Madden, who is our, um, preparing the financial analysis for the board, he was initially scheduled to come before the board on January thirtieth to present his findings and recommendations, but, um, he is still waiting on some numbers and additional information. So, he has asked to propose, postpone his report, um, possibly to the end of February.
Um, waiting for numbers from?
Well, um, he, there was a question regarding Imprest LLC and, uh, sales tax, 'cause we hadn't received any of that.
Well, I was just wondering who, who he was waiting for numbers from.
Yeah, no, it, these are some outside numbers.
Okay, okay.
And, you know, the schools, um, he wanted to wait until they were closer to with their initial budget, so he has those.
Okay.
Tell them where he did find money.
Oh, yes. Well, um, he actually found money for the town of Hanson on the, um, massmoney.com.
Find massmoney.
I, I.
Do we know how much?
Find massmoney?
I find massmoney.
Do we know how much?
We don't know how much, but the Hanson Highway Department and the library were on that list. So, those two are, are gonna go on the site and fill out the forms and see what we, what they have there for us.
Which I, I did see that and I think it's awesome, but I'm wondering if that ought not to be an annual exercise, maybe for our treasurer-collector, to go out and look at the find massmoney and see if any department in the town of Hanson, um, you know, is owed money.
Yeah, I mean, I never would have thought that municipality would be on that list, but apparently we are.
Well, it can be anything. It can be a rebate, it could be a lawsuit, it could be anything, any, you know, bank account you, you didn't, you forgot that you had.
Yeah, so, I'll, I'll report back once they, those two departments, um, send in the forms and receive the, um, correspondence of what it is that they have.
All right.
Um, so, that, that was, um, a little bit exciting. Um, Thursday, January eighteenth, the EPA and the DEP, um, presented their fireworks, PowerPoint information, um, at the Hanson Middle School. Had basically about forty-four people attend in person and twenty-four attended via Zoom. Um, it was a very good presentation. There were a lot of questions that were answered. Um, they were all excellent in providing the information that they provided. So, there are websites, there's contact lists, and I'm gonna be working with, um, our IT director to get the presentation, all the information up on a webpage.
It's already up.
Oh, it's already there?
I put everything up already.
Oh, okay.
I also put up the, um, um, the link to YouTube video.
Oh, excellent.
So, it's on our website? And can we have somebody share it out on, uh, social media?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
'Cause I know, I know people were asking about it.
Yeah, so a lot of, I, I, based on the feedback that I heard, a lot of people left very satisfied with the information that they had received and the questions that were answered. Um, so, very good, uh, presentation. Uh, good energy with our municipal aggregate program.
I'm sorry, Ms. Green, can we just, I just want to make sure that, um, it's clear to people that we took a vote already.
Yes.
That we want to go with the EPA.
Yes.
We're not dilly-dallying, we're not waiting, we're not, you know, this is where the money is, it's the only place where the money is.
Correct.
And we feel a responsibility to take care of this.
Yes.
There is no other option if we really want to take care of it.
And we're also going to work on that bridging the gap. Hopefully, we're gonna, we're gonna get with the, um, people on the Department of Defense Armed Services Committee. Is that what it is?
I believe, yeah, the EPA and the, um, the DEP said they were gonna work with that agency.
But we also need to write letters, is my point.
Right, they suggest that we write letters.
Actually, it was Les Mullenau who had the brilliant idea of saying, you know, i, i, this is an, an issue that was caused by certain agencies.
Potentially responsible parties.
With, with deep pockets.
Yes, very deep.
And they could very easily throw a couple hundred million dollars at this to bridge us from the time that Tetra Corps has been in it.
Yep, Tetra.
Has to wrap up through to when the EPA comes through.
Yep.
Because we, we really have, I don't want to let this drag. We need to keep this going.
Correct, correct. And, uh, the town of Pembroke did reach out to confirm that our board had, did vote to support and move forward with the super fund. So, I did provide them with the information.
Well, I spoke to, um, their chair at the Pembroke Resolve's, um, uh, uh, function and I told him that we had voted that already, um, that it would be appreciated if they would take that under advisement so that it would be at least two of the three towns that were impacted. Um, and Hanover at their, um, at their, uh, presentation indicated they weren't sure what they were going to do yet. The board had not voted, they weren't sure, um, they wanted to wait till the public forum happened, et cetera, et cetera. So, I don't want to wait for Hanover. I'm, I'm sick of them driving the bus. I'm gonna knock it on that soapbox. You guys know how I feel about it. You guys all feel the same way. Um, so, I thought it would be powerful if both Pembroke and Hanson could advocate for the governor signing for us to become EPA. And if Hanover decides to do something different, then that's on Hanover, but we'll just move ahead with what we know is best for our town.
There was a question that was asked, um, you know, to the exact point, that if Hanover does not vote to move forward with the super fund, what happens then? And the EPA representative, one of the EPA representatives did state that they have already started moving forward with the super fund process.
It's happening.
Um, apart from Han, Hanover's, um, support of the pro, the project.
Mr. Han?
Was it also mentioned at the meeting that we should draft a letter?
To the governor.
Signed by us, the five of us?
Yes, yes.
To the governor?
Yes.
Is that something?
And Ms. Green was gonna reach out to the, um, uh, to the governor's office to see if there's certain language that would be more of a, you know, enticement for her to sign. But I think probably the letter will say, we're a small town, we have no funds to clean this up, this has the potential to impact generations to come, we see no other choice. Please support getting the EPA involved. I think it's gonna be that simple, but Ms. Green wanted to reach out and see if there was any key little words that we should, you know, zone in on, so.
I'm sure that the five of us and friends have, have all done our individual letters, but it really makes an impact to have, to have that with the key points that you're mentioning.
Yep.
Um, let's see, so, uh, the good energy municipal aggregate program, so, at the last meeting, I announced that the, the town had received a conditional approval from the DPU, uh, Department of Public Utilities, that they needed to go through some last formalities as far as compliance language. So, good energy, um, has drafted up the document that they're looking for, that they're requiring. Um, and they will be filing that, or they did file that today, the document. So, um, given the document being filed, um, we hope that there will be, well, there'll be a launch date for the program of possibly late in the fall. Um, we're gonna watch this. It could happen before if they, once they give us their final approval. The launch date for the program could happen sometime in the summer, um, but most likely the fall, because, um, once they get that approval from the DPU, they will start the bidding process for the company, for the, um, company that will be providing the energy.
And when do communications to residents start?
Um, I would gather most likely when they receive the final approval from the DPU.
Okay.
Yeah, which they hope will happen sooner rather than later.
Okay.
Because they do want us, they do want to see this program launched between the summer and the fall of this year. Um, so, I gather, once they get that final approval and start the bidding process, then the information to the residents can start funneling. then the information to the residents can start funneling.
Okay, I just really want them to make sure that they are on point for keeping people informed in whatever way that is, newspaper, postcards, cable, because I, I don't want people to feel like they've been hoodwinked and weren't given sufficient notice.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, um, so I'm gonna just piggyback a little bit on, Tony mentioned the Hogsav Brownfields Grant through the One Stop. I actually did have a kickoff meeting with Verdantis, Tracy Costa, who's an LSP. Um, and she, and she does have another member of, um, the company that's gonna be working with the Brownfields Assessment and Gend for Hogsav. Um, basically, they're gonna wait until the snow is gone and then we're gonna have a site walk of the property.
That makes sense.
Get inside. Last time we walked the property, we, they didn't get into the building. So we're gonna be doing that and then moving forward with the testing of the site uh, to see exactly what's there or what's not there. And that's all through that, that grant, which is $100,000. Um, and again, Pratt Place, the culvert that Tony was looking, is looking into municipal vulnerability funds for. Um, so this will go, be on the next agenda, the January 30th agenda for discussions for the ARPA funds because that's required in the process. Um, but with a, uh, not really a quote, but an estimate that we had received in, uh, 2021 about what would cost to repair and that culvert, it was in the range of 1.25 million. Um, so with the ARPA money, I did have a conversation with Tom O'Brien, who's the Treasurer of Plymouth County, and then Matt Henley, who is a, um, representative of the Plymouth County ARPA. Uh, this project is eligible for ARPA funds, but there's a process that will start with the, the board discussing it and voting to use the ARPA money for that. Um, and then we will put a placeholder in the warrant because this will have to go to town meeting for the approval. So, um, what will be good is if Tony is able to secure municipal vulnerability funds for this, it may fill in the gap because we know this will be more than what we have. But what we have will cover a large chunk of, um, the repairs, removal and rebuilding of a new one, if that's the way we go. It include, it will include the design, the engineering, the permitting. So, uh, Tony has reached out to five engineering firms to get proposals for us, um, to help us with all of this. All right, so, um, more to come.
Ms. Green?
Um, and then Frank Malisi and I, Frank is the Chair of the Capital Improvement Committee. Uh, we had a kickoff meeting with Colin Center. Uh, we did get a community compact grant of $25,000 to, um, actually have a capital improvement plan drafted up. Right now, we're kind, we go with an Excel spreadsheet with just all the projects listed. So this would be a more in-depth, uh, program plan that will basically isolate and show each particular asset. Um, it will also talk about funding opportunities, uh, that are available for these. So we had the kickoff meeting today. Um, we're gonna wait till just after town meeting and then circle back around so that, um, the focus will be, we'll know what we have at, right after town meeting. Uh, but in the meantime, I'm gonna reach out to some town departments and say, hey, start taking pictures of your equipment um, and just label what it is and then get, send them to our office so we can send them in. Uh, because we are gonna include pictures of our equipment and full description of what they are, um, in this plan. And actually, that re, that, um, concludes my Town Administrator...
Robbie, in the training session?
Oh, MEMA. Yeah, so, uh, MEMA with the training session, they're not, they are not holding night classes anymore. So, um, they are just holding day classes. So if the Select Board can give me some dates, I know some are, have Tuesday, Thursday, but if you can give me some dates, maybe during the day that you might be available for the MEMA training, then I could submit them to Robbie O'Brien.
How long is the training?
Three hours.
Oh, three hours.
Okay.
And it's here or it's...
It'll be at the firehouse.
The firehouse.
I, I can try to be flexible as long as I know in advance.
I can ask Robbie for some dates and try to work backwards.
Yeah.
Yeah, that might be better. I'm the same as long as I know in advance.
Okay. All right, and that concludes my Town Administrator Report for today.
Okay, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn to go to executive session pursuant to Open Meeting Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the barg, bargaining or litigating position of the public body in the chair, so declares, building litigation discussion. Executive session pursuant to Open Meeting Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real estate if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, conservation property, and executive session pursuant to Open Meeting Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A7, to review and approve executive session minutes, January 9th, 2024. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I will entertain a motion to enter executive session. We will not be, um, we will not be, uh, re-entering open session. We will adjourn after the executive session. I will entertain a motion to enter executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you very much.